I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission, October 30th, 2023, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the September 26, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment this afternoon. We'll move on to item number four. Item number three has been deferred. Item number four. Site plan, Pride Truck Sales, addition of 49 parking spaces on 13.8 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located on Industrial Boulevard, tax map 14, part of parcel five. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by 131 Industrial Boulevard Holding Corporation. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. And before we get started, I've got a brief announcement. There's an online training session that is coming up on November 17th, and this is offered through TAPA, which is the Tennessee Chapter of the American Planning Association. So TAPA offers different trainings throughout the year. This one is a virtual online session, and I'll be emailing the link out, and Jake's passing out the flyer that explains it a little bit more, but I'll be emailing the link in the morning that will give you instructions. You have to register online, and then you can view the material and sit in the classes online. So we'll discuss how this will affect the four hours of required training for each of you all. It may count for all of it for those of you that do the four hours of the training. That would knock it out for 2024. So we'll talk about that more later. It's a little early to talk about the training, but Mr. Richardson sent this to me earlier today and wanted me to share it with all of you all. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So getting on to 131, which is Pride Truck Sales. You can see there on the screen, this is the zoning map, and it is zoned I-2, which is Heavy Industrial. And this addition is only for a parking lot. They're proposing to add 49 parking spaces at their current site. And you can see this backward C is the property outlined in blue, and you can see the existing buildings on the site. We'll see pictures of those two in just a minute. This is on Industrial Boulevard. It's right behind the pilot station. So here are some photos of the property. So the existing office building that has the green roof is shown in this photo, and they're not proposing any changes to that building. You can see in this photo, the primary use is truck sales, and this is a different view that shows the pilot station and some of the signage on Waldron Road. And the images now were provided by SEC. These are samples of the fencing. So these photographs show the proposed fencing for the site. It is a decorative fence with a security feature on the top that would deter theft. So getting to the site plan, there's really not any staff comments left, I don't believe, from any department. So there's the site plan on the screen. And you can see, again, this is the existing office building with the green metal roof, and then the parking lot expansion is on the east side or the left side of the site. And again, there's no staff comments, so that ends the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments? The board?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept as submitted. We have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number five. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Amendment to zoning ordinance, amend Article 4, Section 4, dot point zero one zero, off-street parking requirements presented by Mr. Kyle Brown and Mr. Bo Logan. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. So two weeks ago, I showed you all the parking chart that Kyle put together, and we went over some of those parking scenarios. So if you remember, the green, any column with green is the current standards that we have, which is three spaces for every unit in multifamily. So the yellow, the columns marked yellow are within an acceptable percentage that if we reduce the parking, these were all an acceptable percentage for reducing that parking. However, depending on the number of one, two, or three bedroom units that a developer might propose, it does vary fairly widely. So I believe it was decided two weeks ago that option, I believe it was option one was the preferred. Is that right?
It seemed to be the consensus of most of the board, yeah.
So since that, I don't know of any changes to these tables that have been made, so it's the same exhibit as two weeks ago. So staff is comfortable with whatever suggestion you all have moving forward.
Logan, just to go back to the workshop, there was some discussion about that if we went to another level, add another level on homes, apartments, how would that impact it if you had a garage at the bottom of the unit as well? Because you discussed about adding another level to buildings.
So would that be a four-story building with parking on the bottom?
Correct.
If there are garage spaces, then they would count toward that maximum. So I don't know. It would depend. I don't think the ratio would change. Like in option one, if your multiplier over there is two spaces per the one bedroom, then you would still apply that, and then the 1.1 space per bedroom with two or more. So it would depend on how many garage spaces they offered.
At the workshop, there was only four of us here, and I think the other members didn't get a chance to input. So personally, I'd like to do some more discussion on this, move this to the workshop.
I will agree. I know I wasn't here. I was at an economic conference. I did have one developer reach out to me today and bring up the, that this is for all apartments. And so what about gated apartments versus open lot apartments? Because then you're dealing with public easements, whereas gated, you're not. And so they've asked, I've asked them to get me some data to go with some of their information that they're suggesting. But I know I proposed it be deferred last month, and I think we should again because we had just a handful here last time.
Looking across the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to defer.
Our second.
We have a motion to defer in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion deferred. On to new business. Item number six. Final plat, Guavera subdivision, three lots on 3.89 acres requested by Doyle Elkins. Property located at 396 Stones River Road, tax map 14, parcel 54. R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Burgos J. Guavera. Mr. Logan?
So this is the property for the proposed Guavera subdivision, and you can see currently there's one large lot. The existing home is located here, and this is a total of about 3.89 acres. So for a wider view, you can see the school comes into view here to the east. So again, we're talking about this rectangular lot. So their proposal is for three lots total, so I guess said another way, it'd be two new lots, although the boundaries of the existing lot would change quite a bit. On the zoning map here, you see it's orange, and that's R1 Low Density Residential. So these are photos of the property on Stones River. And there's the existing house. And then this is the entrance, shows the property with the entrance to the school, and the home is here to the left in this image. And this is the plat that was submitted by the applicant. Their surveyor is Doyle Elkins, so this plat was prepared by Doyle Elkins. But you can see the proposed layout with the three lots if this were to be approved, and then the existing home would still be located closest to Stones River Road, and then the other two home sites would be further off the road and behind the existing house. There's no comments left from planning. The fire hydrant information was updated. I talked to Mr. Elkins on the phone this afternoon, but he wasn't prepared or in a position to be able to resubmit today, and because no one was here for the workshop, that would complicate them moving forward tonight anyway. But I do believe that the family is here. There are several comments from engineering and utilities, so I'll turn that over to Mr. Lyd. Thanks.
The primary utilities comments are the fact that they don't have water line sized for a fire hydrant to this site, nor do they have public sewer. So there are relatively significant six-inch water line extension required, fire hydrant placement, and public sewer extension.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative here for this project? If you would, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
I'm speaking for my father, Jose Guevara.
Absolutely.
My name is Michelle Guevara.
And your address?
598 Forest Ridge Drive.
Thank you, ma'am. So there's a couple of items that are still left on the table that need to be addressed on your plot, mainly sewage and water.
Yes, sir.
On your end. I've noticed, I know Mr. Coates had asked for looking into the driveway so that there wouldn't be three separate driveways on there. Mr. Coates, did you notice if that was addressed?
It hasn't, the paperwork hasn't changed, I think, since we last saw it at the workshop, so no.
So with the few items, if we vote, chances are it will be turned down. Would you like to defer and give Mr. Elkins a chance to address these items?
Yes.
They can request it, but they couldn't.
Can you, would you like to request a deferral?
Yes.
I have a question real quick.
Please, ma'am.
So with this, the subdivision, is it for more of the family to come on the property or just to sell it to?
Family.
For family, okay.
With that, ma'am?
I'll make a motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. See you at workshop, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Item numbers seven, eight, and nine have been deferred. We're moving on to item number 10. Preliminary plat, Co-op Business Park, three lots on 114.8 acres requested by Barge Design Solutions. Property located on Old Waldron Road, tax map 15, parcel 24 and 28. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Tennessee Farmers Cooperative, Inc. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. So this request is for the preliminary plat at the Co-op. I get so many deferrals I'm trying to catch. Okay, so the preliminary plat at the Co-op location, so this tract is 114.8 acres, and purpose of this plat is to create the new lots that will make way for the new industrial development that is coming. The proposed layout on this plan will have nine lots total.
Point of order, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I think we skipped 10.
That's the one I read, sir.
That was deferred.
No, sir, I read that one. Preliminary plat, Co-op Business Park.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Continue, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so this plat would create nine lots total, one lot for each proposed industrial building, and you can see.
Oh, Mr. Logan, mayor is correct. You are working on number 11. We are on number 10. Thank you, ma'am. Number 10 is preliminary plat.
Which is the plat? Yeah, yeah. The slides may have not caught up, but I'm speaking about the plat, which is the nine lots.
94. My apologies for the confusion.
Okay. So you can see, I think everybody's familiar with this site, so I'll skip over some of that part. The zoning map, this is I-2 Industrial Zoning, so no problem there with the uses that are proposed. And then these are the site photos with the existing facilities there at the Co-op. And this bottom picture here is taken from Waldron Road, which will be the approximate location of the new entrance. So this slide shows the plat, and you can see the general layout of the lots as well as the surrounding features on the ground, like the existing railroad and the streets that bound the property. So on this report, there's very few comments left. Engineering has a few, so I'll turn that over to Mr. Lyd. Thanks.
All my comments were addressed.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
No.
One quick question for Gary. Were water and sewer letters available? Are they provided?
They, that's a process of they have to submit for those and work with the Public Works Department, and they've got to turn it over to their consulting engineer to get that back. So Scott's comfortable that it's available, but it takes a while for them to actually get the physical letters.
Any other questions? Comments? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve as submitted. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to item number 11. Concept plan, Co-op Business Park, nine buildings totaling 1,081,412 square feet on 114.9 acres requested by Kim Lee Orton. Property located on Old Waldron Road, tax map 15, parcel 24 and 28. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Tennessee Farmers Cooperative, Inc. Mr. Logan?
So this is the concept plan for the Co-op, and you can see on the screen, again, the property is outlined in blue, and this is the railroad track that runs through a portion of the property toward the north side, and then this is Waldron on the left side of the image, Waldron Road running north and south. And on the zoning map, again, you see that it's I-2, which is Heavy Industrial. Same photos from the last item. So this is the concept plan that was submitted, and you can see the layout of the buildings. So they are proposing to have nine buildings by the end of the project, and the total square footage is about 1,081,000 square feet. So each of these phases that you can see here will result in another site plan, so each building will have its own site plan. So nine phases, nine site plans, and that'll help with the CO process as each building gets close to completion. And this is the main page, C2 dash zero zero, that shows the arrangement and layout of all of the new buildings. The two that lie to the east will have to comply with the city's architectural overlay, so those are the two that are closest to Waldron Road, and the other buildings are not inside the overlay. Moving on to the comments. Yeah, there's just some notes from engineering. I don't know if Mr. Lyd wants to go over those, but that completes the report. Thanks.
Okay. Can you go to the site plan on this one? Because I do want to go over this particular note. We asked at the workshop how the construction access was going to be for the construction traffic, and I just wanted to get in writing the engineer's answer. These buildings up here are going to be constructed off of Walton Road. These buildings down here and possibly this one, their construction traffic is going to come off of Old Waldron Road.
Very good. Something you want us to address now or can be addressed later down the road?
That is simply a statement. So that's not, the engineering comments were all addressed, so that is a statement just they had made that verbally at the last meeting, and so I wanted to get it in writing.
Is there a representative here for this project?
Rob Hartz, Tenley Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Is something actually needs to be on the plan, Mr. Lyd, or do you want it just a letter in writing from them?
This, it's in the minutes now, and it's part of the official document, so I was just, I don't need it from them.
Why not all of it through the, off of Walton Road instead of a portion through Waldron Road and a portion through Old Waldron?
The main issue with that would just be as those first buildings to the north get constructed and start to be occupied, running construction traffic in parallel with some passenger vehicles, we're trying to avoid that to the extent that we can.
Okay, because it would be the same thing you've got. People use Old Waldron as a cut-through as far as in the morning and the afternoons, and it's all pedestrian traffic through there.
Understood. I mean, I think we can certainly look at options with how to phase the construction traffic appropriately. We felt that there'd be less traffic in general on Old Waldron compared to the other directions, but...
Jeff Kinnick, Sneak, One Music Circle South, Nashville, Tennessee. As we talked about in the study session, we really want to have the second phase construction traffic off Old Waldron Road. It's a life safety issue on our streets. We have a brand-new road. We're going to have a lot more truck traffic there. It's going to be easier and safer for us to be diverting those trucks off Old Waldron Road during construction. So it's just a function of phasing, working our way out of the site.
Okay. And we're going to keep an eye on the condition with Old Waldron?
Sure. We're going to be opening up part of it anyways, right? We agreed to reduce some of the storm drainage improvements there, so we are going to be proposing a couple of new 48-inch culverts along that road, so we will be getting in part of that road anyways.
Okay.
Any other questions, ma'am?
One other quick question. So the traffic light on Waldron Road, I mean, that's in process? Is that going through or is it?
Yes.
So there will be a traffic light there?
There's a new signal under design there with that D cell lane in place and the relocation of the NES lines.
And we're going to get a sign further up on Waldron for just letting people know there's a new traffic light there, because I know people come over that hill pretty fast.
Yeah, absolutely.
Coming soon.
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. In a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number 12. Amendment to site plan, Altera Existing Building totaling approximately 10,500 square feet and building addition of 7,300 square feet on 5.16 acres requested by Paradigm Studios P LLC. Property located at 122 Charter Place, tax map 29, parcel 2.05, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by 122 Charter Partners LLC. Mr. Logan?
So this is an amendment to a site plan that was approved this year in April, and this is the 122 Charter Place or the Altera Project. So you can see it there on the screen. This is the existing building on Charter Place, and actually, Ditch Witch will be moving some of their operations into this building in the future, and so the Ditch Witch current location is just in view here on the right side of the image, so they're neighboring properties. And zooming out, you can see the interstate and Waldron Road come into view along with Center Point. It is zoned I-2 Heavy Industrial. And here's some photos of the property. There's the existing building in that photo. Another close-up of the front of the building. And of course, everybody's seen the site by now and a lot of the gravel and dirt that was on the site for many years. This picture shows the loading docks on the north side of the building. So this amendment includes some changes to the widths of their concrete areas and their parking areas, as well as a change to the brick color and a change to request a change of fencing, some of their fencing. So the site layout, we'll move to it next. So you can see in this image, the clouded area, these are some dimensions at the front of the building, and they're proposing to change the clouded areas. There's another clouded area here. Those areas along with the change to the brick color, and there is the materials board that they provided that shows the brick that they're proposing. All in all, these are fairly minor changes for your review. And I don't believe there's any comments at all. Go back and check that.
Just the fence.
Yeah, just the fencing was the only item from the workshop two weeks ago. And I believe that's the only item that would need discussing tonight.
Is the fence still on the drawing?
Well, they called me, and I believe they wanted to have a discussion about that at the podium, so they've made some changes or proposing changes, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Representative for this item? Name and address, sir.
Yes, Alex Dickerson with Thompson Burton, 1801 West End Avenue. So if you all will remember from the, and thank you so much, Bo, for that summary. Originally, the site was approved back in April with us reconstructing the existing chain-link fence that was at the building line. And so one of the, one of the changes that we're making with this proposal is to extend that fence out a little bit and put it closer to the property line. That actually makes it consistent with some of the other fencing in the neighborhood, specifically next door, as you heard Bo say. Ditch Witch is kind of the, they're going to be the tenant in both 122 R property and 140. And so by extending this fence out there as chain-link, it kind of harmonizes the two buildings, which are the same business in both. There's also some chain-link fence that is at 131 across the street and 141 that extends closer to the property line. And so at the workshop, I understand that this body asked to see if that could be a wrought iron fence. And so the applicant did some diligent research to see how that could be accomplished. And unfortunately, the change in cost to turn it from chain-link to wrought iron was prohibited. And so... And so, um, about a seventy thousand dollar increase, which seems insane, but given how building costs are, I guess it makes sense. Um, and so there, what we're requesting is, given the fact that there's properties around here with chain link closer to the property line, uh, that the planning commission would perhaps reconsider that and allow that to be chain link. We could do the, the, uh, coding that, that I think planning had a original recommendation on its, on the first part of this application, that if you didn't want wrought iron that, or decorative fencing, that it needed to be chain linked and black coded. We'd certainly be willing to do that. And so, we just wanted to bring that up with the additional information about the other buildings in the neighborhood and see if there would be an, uh, an interest in allowing that to happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What plan for discussion?
Well, I wasn't here last time for, for it, so I, I don't, I mean, I will say, I know with that area, um, we have not seen change over as far as, I, I know that, uh, Mr. Dixon mentioned, um, or Dickerson, I'm sorry. Um, mentioned that there's several chain link. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, all of that is before there was an overlay. Um, Kyle, Gary, or Beau, can y'all confirm that? That, that there's pretty much been no, no change over in that area, really?
I, I would agree. Thornton's was the catalyst, of course, for the whole corridor. This is the last parcel in the overlay. The current Ditch Witch building, which is, and, and these pictures were provided by the applicant and, and in your packet, so you all might have seen these already online. But this is the Ditch Witch existing, but that's not in the overlay. So, we're dealing with that, too. We don't, it's not apples to apples.
So, every, the chain link that's there would be what's, it's, it's not part of the required overlay. The required overlay, is it wrought iron, or is it, um, just vinyl coated? Graham, do you know that one off the top of your head?
The other is wrought iron, I believe, but I've had it in there, it's a bit black, but I mean, I'm not sure.
Or stone?
Stone, yeah.
So, I mean, if that's the overlay.
We're going to check the book and make sure we get it a hundred percent.
You can keep talking.
And what was, Beau, what was already approved? Was that, uh, vinyl, uh, black coated chain link fence?
Yes, sir, that was approved in April.
Okay, and that, and we still would have had the same overlay. So, um, and I would think that Beau, that, uh, not Beau, but, uh, Commissioner Coates would be all over if we went outside the overlay.
For sure.
Um, so, our, our say, if it's not part of the overlay to have wrought iron, while I would prefer to have it, if it's not a requirement in our overlay, if they're still willing to do the vinyl black coated, I would be fine with that, uh, myself.
It would be required, although, right, to be black coated?
Not yet, because we haven't updated the zoning ordinance or the overlays. So, we're working off the current overlay, the same one that this one was approved under in April. Now, that, since the zoning ordinance is still here with the planning commission, the cur, we have to look at the current zoning ordinance, not the future.
Agreed. I think the variable here was that they were moving that section of fence closer to the road. As well.
How far would it be from the road?
Uh, roughly fifty-five feet from the actual edge of pavement. Twenty-eight feet from the right-of-way line.
And what is the current, if, if anyone knows, with, um, with the neighboring property, Ditch Witch, how far is it from the road? Since we're wanting, since we're talking about making it similar to the neighboring property.
Looks to be about...
Ditch Witch looks like it's thirty feet from the road.
Agreed.
So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with it. Anybody else have an opinion?
Sir? Sir? Ma'am?
Vinyl coating is fine with me, as long as it's, as long as Commissioner Graham can find it in the book.
The pressure's on, sir.
Yeah, no pressure, I'm, what is it?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Coates.
See if I can just do a quick word search. It doesn't say wrought iron, but black is what we've been preferring to do.
So, it does not say wrought iron.
No. Black vinyl it is?
So...
Black vinyl with, um, nice fresh look.
Do that, yes.
Everybody do that. Everyone fine with that?
With that said, are these plans showing that, showing the appropriate distance?
Mr. Logan?
Well, the, they called me, I believe it was, um, if you don't mind, go back to the podium. We had a conversation on the phone, and they wanted to submit late. And I told Mr. Dickerson, we could not allow a late submittal, that it's, it's, eh, all of you all and all of us in a bind, so whatever was submitted last is what's on the screen. I will let him speak to that, cause there's been too many changes to these fences.
The, and what we have, uh, submitted, I believe, is, shows what it is we're asking for. The wrought iron, or sorry, the, the black coated chain link fencing at the, at where it is on the, on the site plan.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the precise wording, just for, so y'all know, is seven-foot chain link fence with gate. Black coated would fall within that, but it doesn't specifically say it on the site plan.
But it does say it in the ordinance, so they would be required to make it a black fence. So, obviously, your choices are vinyl coating or black, so, which, which is really...
Absolutely be able to do that.
Thank you, sir.
And then, uh, do y'all plan to, similar to how Ditch Witch has, uh, looks like barbed wire on top? Are y'all planning to do that on top of the seven feet? I guess it looks like barbed wire.
If you give us one second, please.
Absolutely.
It's, I, I see it in the photos that y'all submitted for Ditch Witch.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, it'll be seven feet plus the, the barbed wire?
Note K also is the black vinyl coating.
There what?
On the site plan, note K.
Note K?
Yeah, note K includes the black vinyl coating.
It does. I stand corrected, thank you.
Thank you. And the answer in regards to the barbed wire, so is it six foot with one foot barbed wire, seven foot with barbed wire?
Uh, the seven-foot label on top of that column says, uh, nominal height including barbed wire. So, seven feet includes the barbed wire.
Perfect.
Okay. So, it's all-inclusive.
Yes, sir. Any further comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Hold on, Carol. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen has been deferred. Item number fourteen. Site plan, Sazarak site improvements, including expansion of loading docks in existing building on twenty-two point seven eight acres. Requested by Denham Blythe. Property located at four thousand Center Point Drive, tax map seventeen, parcel thirty-seven point zero two. I two heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Ajax Turner Properties. Mr. Logan.
So, this site plan request is from Sazarak, and, um, they're requesting site plan approval for exterior improvements. Uh, this area is presently paved, and, um, the changes would include new containment walls, new storage vessels, and a tanker access platform. This site is not in architectural overlay, so they don't necessarily have to comply with any of the overlay. Uh, the current, uh, view of the building is shown on the screen. Uh, the other end of this building is Ajax Turner. So, um, if you've been to the Ajax Turner site, you've been in the building, uh, that contains Sazarak. So, there's a little bit wider view. Uh, you can see I twenty-four coming into the picture to the north. And this area, uh, is also a large area of I two heavy industrial. This is a current photo of the Sazarak facilities and their equipment that's, uh, outside the building. Slightly different view of the building. So, moving on to the plans uh, that they submitted. Uh, this one's a little bit different in that this is an existing building, and they're making fairly minor changes and changes also to their equipment. Um, so we're not looking at the whole gamut of stormwater and landscaping and all of that. And the computer's frozen, so wait a second.
It's a pretty big file.
Yeah, it's a very large file. Um, I'll just move on to staff comments, so it doesn't freeze up again. Um, I think the only comments remaining may be from engineering, and, uh, they may have already, looks like they've done all of those. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lied in case he wants to add anything.
Uh, all engineering comments were addressed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Pretty straightforward situation.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to accept as submitted, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifteen has been deferred, and final item is going to be bonds and letters of credit update, ma'am.
Hello, commissioners. Um, the bond list is up to date. Um, I think the very next one will expire in December, and I'll reach out to them in about two weeks. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Like to thank everyone, meeting adjourned.